And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty just as for all. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the board calendar. Have any questions on the calendar, any concerns? Anything we need to look at?
Nope, none for me.
George?
I never look at anything.
Also, we have the document of public request. It looked like everything has been fulfilled. Any questions on those? No? Kathy?
No.
Okay, we'll move right on to the hot topic. Alrighty. Senate Bill 5395, Steve Raff.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully what I have the opportunity to present to you tonight will hopefully ease people's concerns about this Senate bill. I know that it received a lot of, it was very controversial. It turned out into a referendum, referendum ninety to try to get it off the books, which that was passed or defeated. I forget which way it was set up. But Senate Bill fifty-three ninety-five is actually into law now. And what I'd like to do is just, I provided you some information prior to the meeting and I've identified a couple of things that I'd like to highlight for you and then have the opportunity to take your questions and any discussion that you would feel. I think that, as I stated, just kind of impromptu in our last meeting where this issue came up, a lot of the controversy around the bill is really targeted towards one specific curriculum that was approved by the state called the three Rs. And that curriculum itself is very controversial in a lot of areas. That said, it is one of several curriculums that are available for districts to consider for the comprehensive sex education. The curriculum that we're currently using in the spaces that we're using are already approved by OSPI, the Great Body Workshop that we use at elementary and at the sixth grade. And that's already approved by OSPI. So we're already in a place where we're meeting the expectations of the state law. There's two areas where we would have to do some revision and one is they've increased the exposure to sexual health education to two grade levels at the high school. We currently only do that in freshman health and fitness. So we would have to look at another grade level where that would be exposed to. And then throughout fourth grade through high school, we need to add the element of affirmative consent and bystander training into that piece. And those are literally just additional instructional pieces that we have to add to what we're already doing. I would say that the law is very clearly delineates the authority and the control for what gets taught in the district at the board level, at the district level. The state does not mandate that we have to teach a specific thing at any grade level. The guidelines through the standards for the PE and health guidelines allow flexibility in that. So the simplest way to put it is you don't have to teach what you don't want to teach in your community. And so that's one key thing. The other key thing is that the community, even by our own natural process of curriculum adoption, always has a voice, has always had a voice in what it is that we're considering for curriculum adoption. So that's already in place in our board policy and in our practice and we would continue to use that. And so the voice of the community is prior to any adoption of any type of a curriculum. And then knowing that in a diverse community, you're not going to necessarily always satisfy every element of the community, parents ultimately have the final say as to whether or not their children would be taught under any curriculum that we provide. That's no different than it's always been. So that, we've always had that. Parents have always been able to opt out of sexual education when whatever we provided. We've always provided the opportunity for parents and community to see what it is that we're teaching kids in this area before we teach it. So there's a lot about what's in this law that isn't any different than what we've done and won't change any of our practice. My feeling regarding our successfully moving forward with the implementation of this law centers around being really clear, excuse me, really clear with our community in communication about what the law is and what the law isn't. So that we can kind of eliminate some of the misconceptions that are out there. And be really clear with the community in terms of what their role and what their rights are. And make sure that families know that when it comes to the sexual education of their children, they have the final voice and they will. And so when I look at what's coming up for us and the timeline that has been established for this, the only thing that I can see is that if they hold the timeline that was published, is that by next year, the only adjustment that we would have to make to what we're currently doing is that additional year of sexual health education at the high school. Because by next year, you're supposed to provide it at two grade levels between six and eight and two grade levels between nine and twelve. We already do it for three grade levels at the middle level and one grade level at high school. And what we're doing at the middle level, the sixth grade, is the Great Body Workshop, which is already OSPI-approved curriculum. What we do at the seventh and eighth grade is a kind of a comalgum of resources that our middle school educators have put together. We would use the tools that OSPI gives us to review the current curriculum that we're already using. It doesn't have to be a specific curriculum that you have. We just have to be able to represent that what we're teaching kids at those grade levels meets kind of those guidelines and that criteria. And OSPI has provided us tools that we would provide for our teachers to examine what they're doing and either confirm or present the different adjustments that they might need to make to meet those tools, guidelines, along with the affirmative consent and the bystander training elements that are now added. And so even moving and getting ready for next year, there's not, the big change would be adding an additional grade level option at nine-twelve. And there is a webinar, OSPI is putting on a webinar two weeks from today, on the seventeenth, that I've signed up for. I'll be anxious to know whether they're going to hold that timeline. Because we would want to, if they're going to hold the timeline, we do want to make sure that we're providing our community the opportunity to know what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it and have them have the opportunity to provide feedback and input on it, which as you all know in this environment, is more difficult to do in a virtual environment. It may be that OSPI is going to delay that piece of the nine, the two times at six-eight and the two times at nine-twelve for another year until we can get people back in and we can do that. And if they do, then literally what we're currently doing now, we wouldn't have to make any adjustments for the next school year. So I'll know more about that in two weeks. And so I think the big idea, I'll just kind of summarize my thoughts here again and forgive me if if it's a little bit redundant and I sound like I'm repeating myself, but for the nature of just being clear, there is a lot of emotion that's been stirred around this bill. What it looks like to the ordering community is not emotional. And I think how we provide, how we move forward, I think we can do this in a way that really de-escalates people's concern through really clear communication about what the bill is, what the bill is not, and what it means to the ordering school district. And it doesn't mean a lot different to the ordering school district than what currently exists. And so with that, I'll just pause and give you a chance to ask questions and I can hopefully answer and address any of your issues that you might have.
Steve, thank you for the, thank you for your explanation. In terms of adding the affirmative consent and the bystander training, is that something we can bolt on to our current Great Body Shop program? Do we have to buy another curriculum in order for those requirements satisfied?
Yeah, it's a great question, Carrie. And when I looked that up, I couldn't find any curriculum that they specified or that they directed. And when we go and really, I actually had to go back and figure out what, I think I know what this means, but what does it actually mean? And in the guidelines, they say affirmative consent is an approach to giving and receiving consent for any activity that includes clear voluntary enthusiastic permission. It is not just the absence of no. And I think basically that's what we have to teach kids. And I don't know that it even teaches a curriculum to do that, but we have to, we have to be able to have kids know that it's an enthusiastic consent, it's not a the absence of no. Bystander training teaches students how to safely intervene when they see bullying, sexual harassment, or unwanted sexual activity. And so we would be a different curriculum and maybe even by this time next year, the Great Body Workshop might make those adjustments. It's very likely that they do. They do make annual adjustments. They did not make an adjustment to their curriculum last year. And what we had heard from that was they were kind of holding on to outcome of this legislation and stuff like that. I would anticipate that they would probably add that into their curriculum. And if not, it is something that I think we could add in without having to change the curriculum itself.
I'm really glad to hear that you feel are, that there will not be a lot of controversy around any of the changes that we have to make to our current programming. I do hope that we will be sensitive, however, to parents and families who are maybe expecting there to be controversy and expecting there to be significant changes. And they're going to come to us with deep feelings and emotions and concerns. And I don't want to belittle that. So I just want to share my thoughts and I hope that even though it's not significant changes for us, that we can be sensitive to those big concerns that are going to come until they learn more about what we're doing. I just want to be sensitive to that because if we kind of downplay, if we downplay it too much and then we don't ally the communication around that or at a level that catches the emotions into this bill. You know, there was a lot of opinions and thoughts leading up to the passing of this bill. And so I want our communication to start at that high level and then calm down as people start to become more familiar with what we're doing.
Yeah. What I would definitely follow your lead in terms of what you'd like to see happen. My thought, and I'll share that with you and then we can go from there. My thought is, again, getting that communication out there from a district level of what the bill is, what it isn't, and what it means to ordering. And then attached to that, questions and concerns would be directed back to me. And I would be kind of the point person that would be able to address any of the community parent concerns. And even if they reach out to you, which you guys know that they do, you would feel comfortable with saying, okay, thank you for your, you know, like you're saying, Carrie, we want to take this serious. Here's the person we'd like you to talk with. And if he doesn't satisfy you, then call me back, you know, kind of thing. But I really believe that we would be capable of addressing all of the concerns. I shared, I'm one of them. I mean, I was one of them that had lots of concerns with this relative to the three Rs. And I recognized that what my concerns were relative to was one curriculum. So that was helpful for me. Because as I prepared for this, to have this conversation with you, I feel like I've done pretty thorough homework and the more I've gotten into it, the concerned I am. Because what I was concerned about goes like this. What I need competency goes like this because it's very, very clear. I mean, it even says in here that OSPI, even if you choose a curriculum that doesn't meet the standard, OSPI can't tell you not to use that curriculum. Now, we'll clearly try to use a curriculum that addresses the standards and does good by our students. But we literally don't have even the authority to say, no, you can't do that.
I wanted to share, I thought when I read the questions and answers that you attached, that was extremely helpful. And I think that that would could be one of the first pieces of information we could share because that really sorted out a lot of the misunderstandings. The other thing I wanted to say is with the affirmative consent and bystander training, they had elements to them that were very similar to different elements to the bully training. And also to the awareness of types of touching that's discussed in second step. And so we do have some curriculums that we use that already have elements of those things. So we might be able to also emphasize that those aren't just part of this curriculum, but they're part of, you know, bullying curriculums and reporting qualifications for kids to know what safe touches are when they're younger. So these things are totally distanced from something we already do. Even the ones that we don't directly do for that specific reason, they are connected to things we do already do.
Yeah, and to your point, Kathy, as well, I think a really, really important point is to emphasize that there is no sexual health education required K-three. That it's only social emotional learning and that we use the second step curriculum at that level. And so these kids are getting that training at an early age without any of the other issues that people were concerned about that were teaching our youngest learners, you know, inappropriately at too young of an age. So those would be, we would also emphasize.
But and bystander training, I mean, that's really the, you know, recognize, refuse, report that is connected with bullying. It's just taking it to another level. And I do think we really need to always emphasize what you said, parents can always opt out. I mean, it's just, and that we're not, and that we as a district are not interested in looking at the three Rs curriculum.
No, it just makes my curiosity, what district will adopt? I'd be very interested in knowing that.
I'm just going to take a couple of moments to give my two cents. And first, thank you for addressing my question on the bystander training. That confused me to no end, not knowing what that was and who it was supposed to be directed towards. So I appreciated your really in-depth response to me. And then I also had the privilege of listening to Kathy kind of explain it to me from her perspective and how it aligns with more of the bully training that the kids get. And that's kind of what it's geared for. So, and I also want to thank you for just now calling out the fact that the K-three kids, they aren't included in this education of sexual health. It's the social emotional portion of that. And I think that any community member, any parent is going to cringe when somebody's going to tell them their kindergartner is going to have to start learning these things. And so that you brought that out specifically, I appreciate that. The question and answer thing is great. And I'm going to say for me, myself, as an individual that sits on a board, I'm a person of one, but I wouldn't entertain any kind of curriculum that would make us change our safety protocols in our network. That would be something that I would be, I'll go back to the drawing board, please. That would be my vote. And I'll be very frank about that. So it's just, what was put out there that we all became so enraged with fear? Like you said, the one curriculum, that's not, that's not where ordering is going to go. You would need five wacky board members to even entertain that, I believe. I can do that, but not when it comes to that. But I just want to say that anybody who happens to be listening now or pulls this up on YouTube later, it's all different control. OSPI doesn't have the authority, as you said, Steve, to really command us to use certain things. And parents ultimately have the last option major. And that is that they can pull their kids out of that program if they're uncomfortable in any way. And I just, there was a lot to be concerned about. Not diminishing that for anybody, but the more you move at it, the more you realize it's not quite as terrifying. So that was good to know. It is local control. And so I'm really pleased that you, Steve, keep reiterating that. And I'm sure it's going to be reiterated until we're sick of hearing it. But everybody that hasn't heard it tonight needs to hear it at some point so they're not afraid of it as well.
Well, Steve, I just want to say thank you for clearing up a lot of myths because there was a lot of things said out there that was not actually true. Because I'm like Melissa, I was like, this can't be true. It just can't happen. But I appreciate you clearing up the facts and sticking with just the facts.
What are your thoughts on communication and when will that start coming out? I don't know if you saw the email I had sent to Tony, but I was hoping or wondering if we can get ahead of the game on communication. And I would love for this to be the thing that we don't have sign waving and protests and frustrated emails. And I really don't want to, I don't want to hear that community members felt that they weren't heard in this conversation. And so what are your thoughts on the timing of the communication?
Well, my initial thoughts are knowing that that webinar is coming up two weeks from today would give me additional information regarding timelines. And if those timelines haven't changed, then I would think right when we come back from break, we would want to put something out about this that says what the bill is, what the bill isn't, and what it means to us and what our next steps are and how community will be involved in that. And how, you know, some of the assurances that you've talked about, that we would put that out there. And then that would kind of start the communication link between the community and my office in relationship to ongoing questions and whatnot like that. So that's initially what I'm thinking.
Okay, good. Can we create a space on our website where families can get more information and maybe access the FAQs that I felt were very helpful also?
Yeah, I like, I really like the idea of having a proactive plan. I think that will make a big difference with this because of all the misconceptions out there. And then providing them an opportunity to ask whatever they want to ask about it. Because if we wait to the last minute, I think it will blow up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I hope we can assure, I know parents have always had the option to withdraw their student from the curriculums in the past and will continue with that. But just assurances that the kids will be respected and will take extra care for their, you know, their emotional well-being. It's so awkward to be removed from class and everybody's like, where are you going? I just really want to be thoughtful of the students who may be in that situation.
And I think it would be great if Steve, you and the principals put together some guidelines and information to help the buildings put out their communication when this does have to occur. Because that shouldn't be up to the teachers when this is something so brand new and controversial like this. You know, teachers usually say, you know, mention in their newsletters, you know, what they're doing. But I think this is one that we ought to be really very mindful of it, every step of the way, right? From now till when they do it in the classrooms.
Any questions, George?
No, I appreciated the fact that Steve went through the curriculum and did the legwork to know what was going to do and what wasn't going to work for us. So I like the fact that the current curriculum is adequate and that we just may have to add another year.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next one will be with board comments. Hey, Tony, I received a letter and I emailed it to you and Bonnie. Can you kind of touch on that real quick from the president of the Puyallup School District?
Yes, I will be forwarding to the board tomorrow and commenting with regard to the request by Board President Kathy Yang, the Puyallup School District, who has invited the ordering school board and superintendent to sit in and have some initial conversations about the Sunrise Development on the southwestern portion of the school district. As you know, the ordering school district properties are, there's a huge, I think eleven hundred homes are planned for the Sunrise Development to add to the continuing construction that's taking place within the Puyallup School District. I don't know what initial conversations will entertain. I am going to ask the question of whether or not they would have their attorney representing the land acquisition possibly present at the meeting. If so, I have several people to entertain some opportunities for them to represent the ordering school district and to talk with each of you about your ideas on who might serve as a representative for the district if indeed at this first meeting, Puyallup has an attorney in attendance. I will talk to the superintendent, John Palm, in the next few days and ask him a little bit about what that meeting would look like, the duration, and some subsequent times, and share them with our board. But I think the time has arrived for not only the ordering school board to enter into discussions with the Puyallup School District, but also on the other end of the district, the southeastern portion of the district, and with the summer near Bonnie Lake School District. So there's much to do, a lot of conversations that I've been involved in very positive negotiations with the Bethel School District in the past and other school districts. And I'm hoping that we can resolve the issue amicably. But it is one of high stakes and deals with huge financial matters over the history, future history of the district. So this is not to be taken lightly whatsoever, as you know. More to follow.
Thank you, Tony.
Sorry, when is it the requesting that they meet with us? Is there a date or a timeframe?
Not yet. It's just an invitation to meet and time and date to be determined.
I am very glad that they opened some communication about this, so I.
Well, it signals to me that they want it because otherwise they wouldn't have.
Well, this is not the first time liberals, Leeny and I met with the Sunrise Development. Lynn Rosalini and I met with the Sunrise developer well over a month ago, actually probably two months ago, and met with the superintendent and the construction supervisor in the Puyallup School District. We met at the Sunrise Conference Center. And we had a wonderful conversation. And we're looking for some positive outcomes. But when there's money involved, it's high stakes.
Yeah. Is there anything on our board calendar that we would have an opportunity as a board and our district office leadership there to have a conversation about what that looks like for us and what we as a board should be considering and thinking about? And our vision for the district or, you know, those kinds of things? Are we going to have an opportunity to have a conversation amongst us before we head into these kinds of meetings with other districts?
That's a great idea, Melissa, great idea.
Yeah, we do, the board, the board calendar has scheduled a meeting to speak to developers in February. But I think that Puyallup may be looking at something sooner than that, possibly in the month of January, early January.
And we would definitely meet and discuss, because like I said, it's high stakes. We need to be prepared to, because this, this had came up before, this is not the first time. And we, we talked about this development. And so we definitely would meet, discuss it, be all on the same page before we go into the meeting.
Prior conversations that I've heard, though, haven't, haven't ever, haven't ever kind of trickled down to the board where the board has asked to be included. And I just don't want to go into a meeting kind of not having a grasp on what we all feel for Orting, having those conversations amongst, amongst us first before meeting with other districts.
Yeah, can we move our meeting up from February? Does that put anybody in a bind in terms of getting speakers and?
Do we need to have speakers from the developments, though? Or can, can we just, I was kind of?
Actually, we only have one Tarragon Developments on the calendar for February. That's not the same, that's the Deholy Developer.
Right.
Which would seem like Deholy in January.
I was thinking more along the lines of what, what does this current board, what's our, what's, what's this vision for Orting School District going forward? And knowing that if we had those developments in the Orting School District, we have to be able to, our community must support building bonds. You know, we, we need to have that support from the community. Is the community in on that? You know, we need to, there's a lot of conversation that I don't think we as a board have ever really sat down together and discussed of what Orting's future looks like with these developments coming in. And if we're going to have these bigger developments coming in and saying, hey, we'll take pieces and chunks of Orting if you'll give it to us. I want to know what I'm, what I'm giving. And is that what everybody wants? And?
Well, you know, the one thing that I would urge the board to consider, and I have seen it work successfully, is that for the board to enjoin a bond advisory committee of 15 to 20 community members who would be provided significant amounts of information about the construction housing that's planned in the Orting School District and what it means in terms of housing those students should they elect to attend Orting Schools, if Orting Schools have the capacity to house them. Currently, none of the schools are capable of educating the students in the set plan Sunrise Development. And so you'd have to have a constituency within your community that would serve as a groundswell of support to, and recommend to the board to put a bond measure forward to build new facilities, new schools, and renovate existing facilities. I, I would not leave it to the five board members to decide whether or not there would be a bond measure in the immediate future of the Orting School District. I think it, it may require a greater number of people to weigh in on that conversation who are influential in getting that bond measure passed as well.
You're absolutely right about that, Tony. Thank you for pointing that out.
And I, I think, I think both of you are right. I think we need to, as a board, have a discussion about what we think we need to do and then go and do what you were just talking about, Tony. I mean, because we want to have some kind of cohesive vision of what, of what we're looking at and then, and then begin our steps to involve our community. I mean, because I don't want us to sound, when we meet with the community, even if it's the 15 people, like you just said, that we have no idea what we're even thinking about. I'm not saying a decisive plan, but at least having some cohesion in our thoughts.
So more information to follow. I will have additional information to provide the board in the weekly update as well, and also a copy of President Yang's letter.
Thank you.
You bet.
Do we have a work session in, in January? I, I'm not, I'm eager to tell them that right now.
Bonnie, what, what is the date of that work session?
We, we do, it's the first Thursday in January. I believe it's the sixth.
It's the seventh.
And what's the topic?
Let me look here.
Technology status.
Got Budget 101, Employee Engagement Survey. And it is in fact the 7th of January.
Yep.
We can move stuff around as we please to accommodate. Let's get the dates and start, the dates from the other district. If we have to move it or have to have an extra meeting, we have an extra meeting.
Well, I'll try to nail down some dates as early as possible for the board to consider. And we can move ahead once we obtain those.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that.
Yes, me too. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing. You know, putting together a group of the most influential people in your, in your community to back an initiative to build schools and to renovate existing schools, that's a very powerful statement. And when those people carry the torch on behalf of the community, there's a groundswell of support that, that is hard to beat. Without it, the board stands alone. And so it's, it's almost as if you want to organize a, a, a citizens committee for the passage of a levy. You have a, a private organization standing up and representing the, the modernization of school facilities. And I think it could be one of the most powerful things that could live on as a legacy to this, this community and this school district. Without a bond measure, the whole world around Orting grows and Orting does not. And that is, it's a major decision. It has historical, has historical implications on the future of the Orting School District.
So kind of what I hear you saying there a little bit, Tony, is that it would be in our best interest to kind of get that citizens committee established and going as soon as possible so that we can kind of work in line together with that committee as we go into these meetings with other, with the other districts around us.
Well, I, I think that it can go hand in hand. I think that you can initially have the, the face-to-face conversations with the other boards. But knowing that soon thereafter, you want to put together a coalition of influential individuals who serve on an advisory task force that carry, carry the torch. They're, they become the, the most powerful voices in the community beyond the board. And that's what you want to create. You want to, you want to create that kind of energy in your community. And because five board members cannot pass a bond measure. I've never been able to see that anywhere. Or a technology levy, or an M and O levy. You all know that. And, and, and it's really hard concentrated work. But it can be done, and, and more importantly, it should be done.
Okay.
Because like you said, there'll be some hard decisions. Because remember, you're going to have to build a new school, not in downtown Orting. That school will be built somewhere else. And that, that committee got to really push that bond, because you're moving the core from somewhere else.
Well, there's a way to do that. And you can capitalize on a bond measure to make sure that everybody in the district gets something with the passage of the bond issue.
That's a great idea.
That their improvement's made everywhere. And so there's something for everyone to gain by the passage of the bond. When it's only isolated to the southeastern or northwestern, northeastern part of the district, yeah, the center, the city center is, is going to go without. You're, I think the, the bond measure is doomed.
That's how we got, that's how we got the stadium.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. Any other, any other comments from the board?
Just thank you all for bringing, Steve, thanks for your hard work. And Stanley and Tony, thanks for sharing that new development from Puyallup. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Good job tonight.
Good job, Steve. George, you've been quiet tonight.
Don't have anything to say.
All righty. Not hearing anything. Not hearing anything. We're going to join the meeting at 6:42. You guys have a good night.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.